Like to call to order the Avalon City Council Meeting of Tuesday, November 7th. If we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could just have a few moments for the Lewiston, Maine tragedy that happened recently. There's just been a whole lot of tragedies, so pick one. There's so many. Please be seated. Okay, when you're ready, we'll have the roll call vote, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Lovell?
Here.
Councilmember Schickling?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponse?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here. And do we have any announcements or written communications?
Yes ma'am, I have a few announcements for tonight. The city's 2024 election season will officially begin on Monday, November 13th. Individuals interested in running for office may contact the city at 310-510-0220 to set up an appointment with the Deputy City Clerk Gabrielle Marones or myself to pull your candidate paperwork. There are four offices that will appear on our March 5th, 2024 ballots. The Office of the Mayor, which is a two-year term. Two City Councilmember offices, each a four-year term. The Office of the Treasurer, which is a four-year term. The nomination period is from Monday, November 13th to Friday, December 8th. If you'd like more information about running for office or if you plan to vote in the upcoming election, you can check on your voter registration status, update the information the county may have on your voter file, or if you're a new voter, you can register to vote online by going to lavote.gov. As you know, the City of Avalon's election is consolidated with Los Angeles County. The county is currently hiring individuals interested in working at our local polling stations. There's even a program for student election workers, for any student at least 16 years of age and with a 2.5 GPA or higher. You can find all of the information that I just provided at lavote.gov or you can go to our City of Avalon Elections site. It's cityofavalon.com/elections. On our local site, we have more local-specific information and we just set up an FAQ, a frequently asked questions section there as well. After tonight, there are only two more City Council meetings until the end of 2023. The schedule is slightly different than normal to account for our holidays. Our next City Council meeting will be Tuesday, November 28th. There will only be one meeting in the month of December and that will be Tuesday, December 12th. And our first meeting in 2024 will actually be January 16th, Tuesday, January 16th. Last thing is the City Clerk's office received one written communication from Catalina Business Enterprises regarding outstanding questions that arose during the October 3rd City Council meeting regarding rental golf carts. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Devin, quick question for the student election workers. Are we sending that information to the school?
David, David Hart took 10 flyers up to school today.
Thank you.
If no more questions, Department head reports?
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, got four items tonight. So the fuel tank replacement project work continues on the replacement of the fuel tanks at the fuel dock. Project will replace the four underground tanks with one above-ground tank, which is tucked away in the landscaping planner. It'll be flush with the top of the road, so it's not going to extend above the top of the road. And then we're actually going to put some architectural features when we do the retaining wall around it and it'll look like the adjacent building down there as known as the cave. So those architectural features will look just about like that. And then it will be further improving the landscaping around it, so we're trying to hide it as much as possible. But it'll be one tank for the replacement of those four underground tanks. Hillside cleanup. We completed the work on St. Catherine's Way this last week behind the cave rails. Our next step is to go to Pebble Beach Road this next week. One of the things I want to alert the community that we will be closing during the day, some times during the day, Pebble Beach Road. So after 8:30, so let the commuters go through to wherever their jobs are at the and then it'll be closed till 11:30, 11:30 to 12:30. Let the lunch traffic through and then it'll be closed again after lunch till 4:30. So we'll redirect everybody to Wrigley Road. What that does is it gets all key personnel working on that hillside so we can really make some effort to get that cleaned up. So whereas on, we didn't have any alternative route when we did St. Catherine's Way and so we had to have traffic control there and that slows down the whole progression. Realize that's a pretty big operation with four dump trucks, excavators, loaders, and so we would have to hold the traffic anyway. So if we can just get people going around, that's going to help us and get those cleaned up in that one week. Tree work, we completed the tree work last week along Front Street and then also in Sumner and the parks and then at City Hall. So we'll conclude that tree work at the end of this week. And that will be, I'm sorry to say, this one large tree has to go out here next to the childcare, to the kids' venture there. It's hollow. So that carob tree, so that beautiful tree out here. So we'll have to find a replacement for that, but it needs to be removed because the arborists came and looked at it and said, you need to get, because we were trying to trim it up to get the weight off of it. He said, this thing's hollow, not in a great location for a hollow tree. So realize that's going to happen. And then we have a dead palm tree up there by the sand trap on the road right away that we're going to be taking that one now. So the ADA Ramp Project, Jordal has alerted us within this next couple of weeks. He's going to be ramping up for the ramp project. So that's on the Third Street. And then we have a couple of ramps that we'll be trying to do also at Clarissa and Beacon in addition. So and then we've got our office improvements going. So you can see that that's to give us more office space, you know, as we hire my replacement and then as I'm around here still to work. And then what you'll see in there is we've got a new conference room. So there's a new, smaller conference room, so an additional conference room. We're always lacking conference room space. We have one big window for all of those departments because we have planning, building, public works, code enforcement and our IT functions all within that space back there. So that makes one central window for all the services to be given to the public. And then it also makes it so that the spaces are more functional to the groups because we've had a lot of cross-departmental locations. So for our workspaces, you know, they were kind of like multi-use spaces, which tends to cause a little more noise to happen as conversations happen. So this way we get our functionality improved. So and that, I'd just say, we're knocking it out of the park as far as Public Works doing that. That's all our own crew doing all of that work.
That's good.
John Gilbert doing all the electrical. We will get our outside vendor doing new improved HVAC in there in that area. But it's just, it's great to have our own talented crew that can do all these trades, you know. So any questions?
Yeah, I forgot where you showed, showed me where our little council office would be so when we want to meet with people, we have a space at City Hall.
So that, that conference room's available.
It's that little corner.
So it's a...
It should be where Scott has his little office and little...
No, Scott needs to keep his office.
I'm just kind of teasing, but you know what? It was amazing because you, like you say, you have painters, you have tile guys. They could do everything. So you've got an incredible crew right now.
Yeah, we do.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff. Orange Car Star and Harbor Master. Since my last report Tuesday, October 17th, patrol moored 613 boats for a total of 3,889 nights. Patrol responded to two medical calls and 73 public assists. Harbor warned or advised at least 21 individuals of municipal code violations and completed 153 security checks of the facilities and surrounding waters. For the mole facility, patrol reported this month 125 warnings or advisements of municipal code violations, 17 parking citations, 384 traffic contacts, 71 security checks and five crane assists, otherwise known as boat launch. Some notable changes have been made around the harbor with the seasonal removal of the city end float, which was taken Larson Shipyard for the last tank replacement, flotation tank replacement. And removal of the club dinghy docks occurred this week with the installment of the winter string line and the east side dinghy dock as well as the casino dinghy dock extension. The weather outlook is for seasonal offshore northeast conditions this Wednesday and Thursday. The further outlook on the horizon, starting next week, we're looking at the development of a storm system that may bring the possibility of rain to the area November 14th through 18th. Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city staff. Scott, welcome. Michael Alagria, Fire Chief. For the month of October, there were 92 total calls for service, 67 EMS, 25 fire, and we're about nine away from 1,000, which is our average. So we'll be definitely over 1,000. Other than that, any questions? We did, I forgot to mention last month, last week, two weeks ago, we did have another golf cart, electric golf cart smoking battery. Some work was done, non-manufactured, so something smoked and the guys got there.
Was it in like, in the City of Avalon?
It was right outside of, near Vons on Sumner.
Wow, okay. Thank you. Wow, scary.
Any questions?
Yes, like I meant, I had messaged our chief earlier. Just with the holidays coming up, I requested if they could do some social media posts on what to do and what not to do during stove top fires or oven fires, just so our communities prepared and he said they're getting that ready.
Yeah, we'll work on that and get that out to Jocelyn this week. But Thanksgiving Day is the number one day of cooking fires in the house.
Wow.
Thank you.
And especially when they do those condensers and they put, one of those big things, they put them in.
The turkeys that you fry them?
Yeah. In those big fryer things, yeah. Those are very dangerous. Okay, great. Good, good.
Thank you.
That's great.
Evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, city staff. Matthew King, the Sheriff's Captain on the island. It's our last meeting. We've had 122 observations made by the deputies. We had 81 calls for service. We made six arrests. There was an arrest for felony domestic violence. There was an arrest for criminal threats. One for assault with deadly weapon. One for drunken public and one for a DUI. We also have increasing our enforcement of helmet laws for bicycles. It's, our sites have gone up considerably in the last month or so. It's a lot harder. This weekend coming up, we have a half marathon. We have four reserves working and two of our full-time deputies will be working out there as well. So we'll have six officers working the route. I'm happy to report the station has finally had some upgraded internet. It's, we stepped into the 19, I'm sorry, 2013s. So we're about that level now. It's pretty incredible. So yeah, we can actually watch a video or actually attend training online. It's the greatest thing I've ever seen. At the end of the month, we're going to be having a lot of work done on the station and the courthouse. They're going to be doing a new HVAC system for the entire facility. So that'll start the Monday after Thanksgiving. It should last about five to six weeks total. Any questions?
Halloween. I know that there were a lot of kids running around with dark clothes and hoodies and I don't know what they're called, orbies? And there's some kind of guns with... I don't know what's in them, but they were pelting people all over the place. Plus there were a lot of eggs. Did you come across any of those kids or any interaction with them during?
I didn't personally. I was out passing candy to the kids and then at dinner afterwards with Erica. But no, I know what you're talking about and I did see some kids.
I mean, that's one of those things hits you in the eye. I mean, they leave welts as it is. And anyway, whatever, I don't know if that's just going to be a Halloween thing, but I kind of doubt it. So if you can all be on the lookout for that, appreciate it.
Told there's a lot of egg throwing on the island.
And eggs, yes, there were that.
Last two years I didn't really see any, so I hope maybe they transition to something a little bit less painful.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on it.
Appreciate that. That's all I have. Okay, thank you, Matt. And here comes the other man, unless you want to...
Council, Mayor, Community Service. As, as our captain had mentioned, the Catalina Half Marathon is this Saturday with the event starting at 8:00 AM and ending on Sumner and Crescent around 1:00 PM for the last runners coming in. We want to make sure that, that we are courteous to the runners as they are running through our streets. And then also make sure you come root on some of our locals as they take on this challenging course because we have a lot of locals who are in this race as well. And it's a really nice event to have from Spectrum Sports, who brings it in the off-season. They are expecting around 600 to 700 participants and they bring their family members and so it's a great, it's a great addition to our, to our November weekends here. Also this Saturday on 11/11 at 11:00 AM is the Veterans Day Celebration at Memorial Park. Come out and support our local VFW outpost 4682 in celebrating this occasion and remembering those who served, is serving, fought for and are still fighting for our freedom. Especially in this crazy world that we live in right now, these men and women deserve the respect and I hope everyone comes out to honor them. Later you can join the band Deep Freeze for a rock and roll concert on the Wrigley Stage at 5:00 PM. Three of the members are ex-veterans but are still patriots who will rock for all. Our Avalon Youth Soccer is taking signups right now at cityofavalon.com. This year's program is being sponsored by MLS Go. For $35, the kids ages pre-K to eighth grade will get official uniform kit by Major League Soccer. And the league will be starting on January 14th, but signups are happening right now. We are also looking for soccer coaches. So for more information on how to become a soccer coach, please contact Marissa Ori at City Hall. It's that time of year again. Christmas is coming. Santa wants to know whether you've been naughty or nice. You can tell him yourself with a letter to Santa. Santa's mailbox will be receiving letters November 20th through December 17th at the Atwater Arcade by the post office. Just make sure you put a return address and maybe Santa will give you a sneak peek into your presents. Also, we're bringing back this year the holiday decoration contests. That, that will be opening and the website will be opening up for voting starting November 21st, which will be our next council meeting. That is when I will reveal all the handbook to how to get in. We made the voting process a lot more simpler this year. And remember, if you sign up and you, and you become, you put your house into competition, you'll get a free, you'll get a free ornament to put on your tree for being a participant. And then we have prizes for first, second, third for the homes. So we look forward to revealing that at our next council meeting. Any more questions?
Is it businesses also or just residences this year?
The chamber does the business and we're doing the residences.
Great.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. First, I was going to take the opportunity to remind Council and members of the public, if they're going to be speaking, to speak directly into the microphone. Definitely makes a better viewing experience for those watching remotely. I wanted to provide a quick update on visitor-driven revenues. TOT was down 6% for the first quarter of the fiscal year, so that's July, August, September. July was down 1.4%, August was down 12.5% and September down 5.6%. Again, we had that storm in August depressing some of those August numbers. Other visitor-driven revenues are similar. Admissions tax for the quarter was down 1% but up 9% for September. Kind of the one standout was nightly moorings were up 6% through the first quarter. And that's buoyed by a particularly strong September. But again, last September, we had the weather event, so it kind of swapped roles of where the, the weather impacted. Again, just from a budget standpoint, not very concerned because we didn't budget to have record-breaking numbers just to break even. So we're still on track to come in ahead of budget as far as the revenue side goes. And we'll hopefully see a strong winter and spring this year. I'm going to wait probably till the end of the week to publish the numbers only because I'm waiting on sales tax numbers through September so then I can have a complete set to publish. And then lastly, I'll be presenting the audited financials at the meeting in Ju, January. So that January 16th meeting. Unless there's any questions, that's what I have.
I think we're good. Thank you very much. So our city manager is out, but we have our assistant city manager, Jocelyn. Frances is here, so do you have anything to report?
Yes. Good evening, Council. Just a reminder that Thursday, November 9th, the Vons Vaccine Clinic will be hosted here in the city council chambers from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And on November 19th, starting at 9:00 AM at Wrigley Stage, will be the monthly Catalina Cleanup. Last week, I attended a city manager's summit with the California Contractors City, or Contract Cities, and it was amazing. We talked about transportation, housing, electrification of cities and even got a presentation from a couple of folks that's serving on the Olympics Committee. So very exciting. For the fog inspections, Greece, the inspector will be here in the next couple of weeks meeting with all of the food service establishments within the city to go over best management practices, make sure equipment's being maintained, clean, employees are being trained. So just a reminder to all the restaurants and food service establishments out there, he'll be here in the next two weeks or so. As far as code enforcement, they've had a really busy month. They've issued 477 citations, 10 administrative citations related to restaurants not breaking down their cardboard boxes. So super important, unbroken down boxes, they keep lids open, which encourages ravens and birds to get in there. And then something else they've really worked hard on is they cleaned up 60 bicycles, abandoned bicycles off the street. So that's been great work for them. And then this week, we'll be taking 14 golf carts off-island.
Wow.
Yeah, they've been really busy this last month.
That's incredible. Yeah, thank you. And how about our city attorney?
Yes, I've been directed by the city manager to review the application submitted by the Conservancy for their deer program. We'll be looking at that and we'll come back to the council later this month with our recommendations as to what options the city has with respect to that permit. I've also received calls from California Fish and Wildlife and we're also meeting with the Conservancy attorneys in a couple of weeks to try and, again, work on their permit and hopefully come to, get them to hopefully change their program. So we'll see.
Great, thank you. Councilmembers?
I want to remind everyone that our football team is heading to semifinals. The game is this Saturday at 5:00 PM. They usually do like what's called a blackout, but I don't know the color they're doing this time, so I'm sorry. But please go and support. It's a great time. I know the coaching staff has been doing such a good job with those gentlemen, so I'm very excited. Our breast cancer awareness march was a success. So thank you to Yolise, Yolanda Van Dyke at the city and Jim and his team and everyone else that joined us. And it was a beautiful day. It was nice to celebrate everybody that was there, especially the survivors. And then the Baile de Tierra Bella performances were also a success and that was a lot of fun, really hot, but it was fun. So I want to thank Victor and I also wanted to thank the Catalina Museum for allowing us space to show our culture to the community. And then I also had a couple of conversations with the counselors up at the school and I came across this student housing questionnaire. For people on the mainland, it's mostly based off of homelessness. But given our unique circumstances here on the island, it's mostly for families that are about two or more in an apartment or home. And it's, if you do qualify, you get some sort of like financial assistance. I know that a couple of the kids, the previous years got help buying like sport equipment. I know a couple of kids got like soccer cleats and things like that. I do have a couple myself or you can go get them at the office. And what else do I have? Oh, I did have a question. Where the street coming down Old Tremont connecting to New Tremont, is that us or the Island Company?
On that side of the stop, it's Island Company. On this side, it's us. So where the pothole is, you mean?
Oh, I'm just saying, there's so many kids playing right there and there's the golf carts just speed down, whether it's local or tourists. So I'm just interested if we could reach out, try to get like a speed bump of some sort.
Coming down?
Right before you hit the curve or the turn. Because it would be mostly like where that stop sign is.
Right, right.
Coming down that street, so before that.
And there's a question also for the fire department as well because I know in the past we've talked about speed bumps and there's a concern about them. Maybe, so maybe we can, how about we just come look into that and see if that's a possibility?
Could we?
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be awesome. Especially right now since it's slow, it'd be a good way to kind of figure it out now. And my last thing was, I wanted for us to reach out to Julie and maybe try to work with them of finding a location where we could go and rinse off our trash cans. They're starting to get a little smelly. And I know some people don't want to do it right in front of their home because that's also pretty gross.
Like the ones we put in the alleys, those big...
No, like waste, not the little waste bins, but like the actual, yeah.
Yeah, how do we do that?
Yeah, I have a meeting with her tomorrow.
Oh, perfect. Please, thank you so much.
That's a good idea. That's good.
And that'd be it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing.
Attended Gateway Cities on Tuesday, excuse me, Wednesday, the first. And two parts to that that I just wanted to kind of bring to light for everyone here. I was fortunate enough to have family that put an emphasis on using public transportation when we were growing up. And so when the Blue Line opened, we all went and visited the Blue Line stations and actually went and looked at the art installations that are there. And I think often, most kiddos that grow up here don't necessarily get introduced to transportation on the mainland until they have to, at which point it becomes somewhat overwhelming and/or scary for people to try to experience that as a, as a new college student. So I just want to encourage, if you find yourself with time on the mainland and the ability to do so, it's a great way to get to know Southern California. There's a number of new lines that are coming in with Metro, especially through the West Side. There's a number of new lines that are coming in with Metro, especially through the West Side Anna Branch and heading out towards the Valley, and then heading up north to LAX. Um, with one of the biggest structures being built now to be able to connect LAX all the way through to the transit system that's there currently, um, which means you could take the Blue Line and hop on another train to get straight straight to LAX, which is kind of nice, too. Um, but the art installations, they're actually looking actively at the moment for new artists to put new art into these new places that they're building. So if anyone in town, first off, is an artist that would have the ability and the wherewithal to want to put together a project and submit it, you could do so on Metro's website. Um, and then also, if anyone does have the time to go and take a day or take an afternoon when you're already on the mainland and hop on Metro and check it out. They have a number of new ambassadors that are currently helping to manage the line so that there's a lot more eyes onboard each train and platform um to help kind of increase the feeling of safety and community onboard each of those places. Um, but it's just kind of a cool way to get to travel and not necessarily have to be the one in the driver's seat all the time. So um, worth checking out, worth doing, um, and worth uh just kind of exploring. Um, and then the other discussion that we had was just regarding broadband. Um, the Gateway Cities COG has applied for one of the current funding sources that we also have one of the private entities here in town applying for. Um, so had a discussion regarding trying to combine resources rather than go after separate funds. Um, so we'll see what happens over the next few weeks with that. But the funding that was um available was overrequested with grant applications by double. So um, it's kind of the same space that everything is in where there's not quite enough money to go around yet. So um, other than that, um, had a number of calls um regarding uh parking fees from the Island Company for roads. And so we'll see where those discussions lead. I understand that many, many entities are getting assessed parking and vehicle fees um that aren't necessarily going to be used for the roads, but because they use the roads. So um, just starting to have discussions about that with city staff.
Mary?
Um, not really anything for me, but Lisa, I did have a uh question for you. I I know you don't work for Metro and and I know you're not like a schedule queen or anything like that, but um with their expansion, is it uh something that uh islanders can look at as far as going from Long Beach to um LAX or Long Beach Airport or John White? Probably not going south, but is it is it direct? Can you can you grab the line from Long Beach and go directly to LAX? And is that a viable alternative to a taxi or an Uber?
Yeah, so the part that you have to consider is timing, but if you wanted to save a significant amount of costs, um, it's going to be what it looks like, two lines to get from downtown to the LAX line. Um, so you can get from Pine and First um in downtown Long Beach on the Blue Line, um, and then head from there. And then for Long Beach, I would actually recommend Long Beach Metro as opposed to L A. Um, so for Long Beach Airport, there's a couple of um buses that actually go on Spring Street that take you to the airport directly from downtown um in that same area, that same corridor on Pine and First. Um, so it's improving. I think their goal is to try to improve a lot of these major lines in time for the Olympics, so it's been a great impetus for them, and they're in line for a lot of federal funds, too, which is huge because it's a much bigger bucket than state funds. Um, but the 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 fixes are coming. It's just it's taking time to get there. So, yeah.
Cool. Cool. Very good to know. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That's about it for me.
Okay, and um, David Hart and I met with two representatives from the school last week to talk about the potential for an internship. Maybe first starting with us because we have needs, but as we know, the trades are something that's very much lacking in the schools these days. So uh, I know David's going to be working on this to see if maybe we could get some interns for us, like in the mechanic shop and doing things like that. Because there are, the counselor Marcos, or not, but teacher Marcos said, you know, they have kids that have been identified, they they work with their hands. And they're very smart kids, but they they're not maybe college-bound, but they can get, you know, work in the trades and make really good money. So thank you, David, for for that. I'm excited to hear what goes on with that. Chamber Marketing Meeting is the sixteenth. I will be attending probably some of the other council as well. I'm not sure. Um, Saturday at twelve, I don't know if you have um seen the big collage or painting that's been put on the Hot Spot Building on Clarissa. That's going to be kind of a dedication at twelve o'clock. We want to thank Nora and Jack Tucci for that. It was quite an expensive project, and it is basically uh celebrating the Fourth of July Parade, which started here in nineteen eighty-five. And also, and I knew you wanted to do something along this line at some point, and I don't know if it got any wheels, but we want to thank Art Good for jazz tracks.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, he does a tremendous job bringing over thousands of people that spend lots of the money in Avalon. It's thirty s- thirty-five or thirty-six years old, and we hope he will continue with that. But uh we want to thank Art Good for all of his work in bringing great jazz and great people to life.
Do you mind if I mention those other two as well?
Yes.
Thank you for the reminder. Um, I was actually going to ask about um just doing a couple of proclamations for them, if we could, for the next council meeting, for Art Good, for Raimi Kewin, who also did a number of events for the community um downtown and is out of that role now. Um, and then also for um Laura Lola De Mill, who who manages the art festival every year as well. I think it's a huge draw for people for all three of those events and um provides a service to the community as well, and would like to see if we can honor them.
Okay, oral communication. This is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken.
Mayor, thank you for letting me speak. Uh, council, city staff, good evening. Um, have you ever seen one of these?
Oh, tax bill?
It's tax bill. Um, on here, it says that I owe every year eight hundred and one dollars for subservice trash collection. What I mean by that is we have bins that are not picked up. We have bins that are passed over because there's one bit of recycle on top of green waste in a green green waste container. We have bins where they don't dump it into the vehicle. They pull the bags out, and then they leak all over inside of the bins, like was mentioned with the bins. Um, I've talked to Tax Assessor's Office. If I do my due diligence, I can uh petition to have my trash taken off the bill, and I'll pay it myself. But it's ridiculous. I don't know if you people like being cheated. This is, they're cheating me and every other taxpayer that hasn't had the stones to get up here and complain about it. And frankly, I'm really pissed. Uh, what I like to do is get a copy of the performance. Oh, by the way, Jocelyn, we had a little sit-down. Thank you very much. At that time, I offered to Jocelyn that I could go, if they wanted to, if their rep wanted to see me, I'd be happy to work with them. But no one's knocked on the door, no one's called me, no one's emailed me. So I think they're standing moot on the issue. So, but I would like, as I was saying, to get a copy of the contract. And is there a performance clause in it?
Uh, yeah, certainly I can get you the the contract.
But do you know offhand if there's a performance clause in the contract with a fine or penalty?
Um, not fines and penalties, but there's certainly um minimum requirements outlined in the contract and what the expectations are of the city.
When could I pick that up?
Um, I can email you a copy. I have your email address.
Sure. Thank you very much. Thanks, Matt, for your time and diligence putting up with me. Bye-bye. Do anybody have any questions?
No, because this is oral communication, so we don't really go back and forth.
That's all.
But thank you.
Got to offer. Thank you very much.
Oh, we've been missing you, sir.
Yes, I've been, I've been around.
I know.
Uh, thank you. Paul Virchall, Avalon Library. I don't actually have too much to present. We're going to have a fabulous art uh visit by Barnes Del Arts uh coming up on the fourteenth at four o'clock. They have been really good with us. We've done some beautiful uh mythological mask baking. Uh, we're doing a celebration of Native American Month. We're going to be creating uh Hopi sun god masks coming up. Um, also, some of our usual programs, still doing games on Wednesdays, Smarty Pants Storytime on Saturday. Uh, I'm going to try something new. I'm going to try, uh, I'm registered with JPL, believe it or not, as a solar system ambassador. I know that sounds totally wacky, but it means I have access to the NASA website, and I sort of put together little lectures about outer space. Uh, I'm going to try and do a lecture on the terrors of outer space. Um, vampire stars, black widow pulsars, and dark dark energy. I'm going to try doing that on the sixteenth. Uh, I got some slides from uh, you know, NASA, uh, and permission to do it because I'm a member of the solar system ambassadors. Um, we're going to be closed uh the tenth and the eleventh for Veterans Day. We're also going to be closed for Thanksgiving, November twenty-third and twenty-fourth. So expect us to be closed those days, but otherwise, we're open regular hours. Uh, tomorrow, we'll have our meeting, our regular uh twice-monthly talk, Catalina History with Chuck Liddell. Please come tomorrow. I think it's going to be a very special day. Um, it's going to be, he's, he just gets better. It's like a little folksy, a little legend-y, a little history. It's just really enjoyable, and the people who come to these things have really come away liking it. Um, Color Mania every Tuesday during cruise ship hours, um cruise ship visiting hours, I mean. Uh, and on the twenty-first, uh, also celebrating Native American History Month, we're going to decorate a recipe journal uh based with on the Native American use of strawberries, which apparently I'm told, I have to read the pamphlet for that one. I'm kind of ignorant. Uh, also trying to once again start up our book club, uh, The Seven Husbands of Evelyn Hugo, Tuesday, November twenty-eighth at six P M. Uh, thank you all very much. Oh, one other thing, um, I just concluded the bookmark contest. Uh, I'm about to slap them all into binders. City Council and Friends of the Library, uh, I would like you guys to stop by the library sometime. Not tomorrow because I don't have the binders yet, but come on by and judge uh the entries. We've got sort of very few, very young ones, very few teenagers, a whole bunch of people in the middle grades. So everybody should come by, cast a vote, and uh, that'd be, then we got, we'll have prizes. So for the kids, not for you.
And I have one other question kind of in relation, but I know you're going to be in, no, there's going to be a play. Sean putting on a play?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Can you tell me when?
Yeah, we're, uh, I'm taking off library hat.
Yes.
Uh, we're, the uh Avalon Community Theater Program is going to present Miracle on Thirty-Fourth Street. Uh, I have in my head that it's the first, it's uh early December around Christmasy. Um, it's going to be really good. Uh, I don't know if I should say names. Andrew Quintana is going to be, Chris Kringle, he is so funny. Uh, I play the judge. I play the mean old judge. Uh, I seem to do the baddies. Uh, not as bad as the time I was Humpty Dumpty, and they didn't give me a fat suit. Uh, but again, it's going to be really, really good, good production.
Okay, great. So we'll look forward to it.
Yeah, it's going to be awesome. It is going to be so awesome. It's going to be so funny.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other oral communication on items not on the agenda?
I don't know if I was on the agenda for my uh transportation permit application.
You're not on the agenda?
Okay.
Yeah.
That'll be later.
Yeah.
Oh, that's later?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, consent calendar.
Sure, on the consent calendar this evening, uh, item number one, approved minutes from the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three regular city council meeting. Item number two, approved total expenditures for October ninth, twenty twenty-three through October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three totaling two million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and seven cents. Uh, item number three, reconsider the circumstances of COVID-nineteen state of emergency proclaimed by the governor and COVID-nineteen's continued impact, and determine that state or local officials have imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing in connection with COVID-nineteen. And as such, that continuing to utilize the Projections of Assembly Bill Three Sixty-One will protect the health and safety of attendees. Item, item number four, adopt a resolution accepting the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four first quarter treasurer's report. Item number five, authorize the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Avalon Kids Baseball to store a storage shed at Joe Machado Field. Item number six, adopt an ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Title Six, Chapter Six One, Section Six dash one point one-two-eight, Animal Care of the Avalon Municipal Code and Adoption of Exemption Findings under the California Environmental Quality Act. Item number seven, adopt a resolution declaring the approximate one hundred and two square foot area of land identified as a southwesterly two feet on sheet four of eleven of the city's encroachment survey as surplus, and authorize the city manager or his designee to sell the property in accordance with the city's policy to the adjacent landowners Cory Hoyt and George Paquette.
Great. Did we want to pull any of these for discussion? Okay.
I make a motion to approve items one through seven.
I'll second.
If there's no further comments, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Ponte?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. General Business, item eight.
Okay, uh, General Business, item eight is a presentation of the twenty twenty-three Community Survey Report. Um, tonight, joining me is um Melena from Xilo International Group. Um, she's also on the line. Uh, so in June, city council awarded a contract with Xilo International to conduct the community survey. The community survey will assist the city in qualifying for a variety of federal grant opportunities um that utilize income data to determine eligibility. Uh, Xilo was contracted to partner with the city, and um the city followed the strict HUD guidelines and C D B G uh for the household um approximate annual income survey questions. And I'm gonna um uh have Melena talk a little bit about her process um in conducting the survey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jocelyn, and thank you, by the way, to everybody that was part of the survey. Many of the people on the council who came to do the door-to-door, um, your support and enthusiasm definitely made an impact on the residents and um on the actual results of the survey by uh encouraging many of them to participate. Um, so as Jocelyn said, the the survey uh followed very strict C D B G guidelines. Um, there there were, uh, we did a mailing survey, we did online, and then door-to-door. So there definitely was an effort. Uh, we got a grand total of six hundred and thirty-five surveys. Uh, two hundred and four of those uh came via mail. A hundred and sixty-one were completed online, and two hundred and seventy were done through the door-to-door effort. Among those, sixty-five were in Spanish and the rest in English. Um, in order to qualify for many of the the C D B G um and uh grants, uh, we had to follow strict guidelines, which included going over the quality control, quality um assurance of all the surveys that we received. And out of those, four hundred and fifty-one are valid. Many of the results that you're going to see in the following pages are the results from uh from the surveys that we gathered.
Um, so we're just going to briefly go over the findings that are outlined in the report. Um, after this meeting later this week, we are going to post the entire report um at cityofavalon.com/survey. Um, so for those folks who want to take a look at the survey results, they can do so.
Great, thank you.
And I also wanted to mention another fact, too. So uh, we stand by the results. Um, we were able to uh get a plus minus three point uh twenty-six percent margin of error at a ninety-nine percent confidence, which makes the the survey uh data valid and uh statistically valid. And that is based on the population size of Avalon of thirty-four hundred and sixty. And um including of of the four hundred and fifty-one valid surveys that we received representing um a thousand seventy-four residents.
All right, great. Thank you, Melena. Um, so the first uh two questions we have up on the screen here are really related to household size um as well as residence size. Um, so notably, the thirty-five percent um of uh households surveyed are part of two-person households. Um, and uh, as you can see from the data, um, there's some implications that households, uh, might encompass, um, multiple families, right? Which makes sense, um, roommates, uh, families living together. Um, so here's the summarized information, seventy-four thousand, uh, dollars a year is the median income, how, household income, excuse me, a hundred-and-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-seven for the average household income. Uh, the average family size is two-point-three-eight, um, and as Melena mentioned, uh, the households, uh, that participated in the survey total four-hundred-and-fifty-one. Um, so to do some comparison with, uh, LA County, um, and what can, what's considered as low income, I think, um, uh, you guys saw a lot of the data that was published, um, a couple of months ago, um, and there are some disparities that emerged from the data, um, from the survey. Uh, so white households, uh, which represent a majority, um, at seventy-six percent, have a median income of eighty-thousand dollars a year, while racial minority households, um, representing twenty-three percent exhibit a lower median income of sixty-five-thousand-five-hundred. Um, as, uh, Melena mentioned, um, the four-hundred-and-fifty-one surveys, uh, represent, uh, over a thousand residents. Um, so taking the data, uh, that was collected, um, that equates to six-hundred-and-forty-two living in low-income households, um, which represents sixty percent of the population for the City of Avalon.
Wow.
As far as, uh, renting, owning, um, whether or not, uh, housing is subsidized or coordinated from an employer, um, uh, sixty percent of Avalon residents rent, and nineteen percent obtain their housing through their employer, either through coordination or subsidy. Um, and then as far as, uh, how many years have you lived in Avalon, um, fifty-seven-plus percent, uh, have lived in the City of Avalon for more than twenty years, um, so well over, um, or a majority, and then, um, eighty-five percent of the respondents live in the city year-round. Um, I just wanna make a note of this, um, those that lived in the city, uh, for fewer than four months were not included, um, per CDBG guidelines, so I just wanna make that clarification. Um, how would you describe your employment? Uh, this question could've been done a little bit better, to be honest. Um, uh, we've got, uh, two-thirds of the population where the work is primarily on Catalina Island. Um, and then, uh, as far as what describes your employment, um, you can see that hospitality, food service, and recreation, um, make up, uh, close to thirty-nine percent, um, and then following behind as other. Um, and so, uh, when, uh, Melena and her crew looked at the numbers a little bit more, um, it looked like there are quite a few folks that work in real estate, which makes sense, um, and utilities, which also makes sense with SoCal Edison, um, and so now we know for next time.
Yeah.
And then, uh, health coverage. Um, so, uh, a majority are insured, um, through their employer, um, at thirty-eight percent, or I should say, a majority of the folks that responded. Um, and then, uh, some individuals, you know, get their insurance from more than one place, so. Um, internet access at home, um, so, uh, fifty-three percent, um, have broadband at home, um, where, uh, twenty-eight percent rely on cellular service. Um, and then, uh, education statistics, um, you know, kind of all over the board, uh, there. Primary source of transportation, um, golf carts, uh, a little over fifty percent, um, and, uh, walking at twenty-two percent, which I thought was, um, valid and interesting as we look at, uh, transportation and pedestrian, uh, safety. Um, we separated out autoettes, because we know we've got, like, cars and things like that, that technically qualify as an autoette versus a golf cart. Um, as far as electrification, uh, vehicles, uh, seventy-four percent of those surveyed do not intend, um, to purchase an electric vehicle in the next two years. Um, I think this has a lot to do with existing infrastructure and the complications within our city. Um, so, um, uh, and then the ferry service, um, so, uh, sixty-eight percent, one to five, uh, times a month are using the ferry service, and forty-two percent of those rides are same-day round trip. Yeah, and then, um, finally, some demographic information on ethnicity, race, and age. Um, we've got, uh, um, forty-two percent of the population surveyed of Hispanic or Latino or Spanish in origin. Um, and then, uh, yeah, and then, again, like, the age is kind of all over the place, so, um, yeah. That concludes the survey. Any, uh, questions?
I did wanna say thank you. Um, well, one for allowing us to help and be a part of it, um, but also for doing this. We got some good numbers that are gonna help.
Are there any really surprises?
No.
No.
There's no surprises?
But it's nice to see it published.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But also to see it a little more accurately reflect the community than what the census showed, which is huge. Um, I, I do wish we could've done a little bit of, uh, uh, overwork on some of the questions to get a little more data and info from people. Um, it was nice getting to do days with them, um, to be able to work with the crew that was doing it, and they were super, um, passionate and going out and just trying to think of everywhere they could go to to meet with people, too, which was nice, so, yeah, big thank you.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions? Okay, well, thank you. Hope to see you again.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it, and, uh, I wish the City of Avalon the best of luck. I hope you get tons of grants because of the study that we did, and, uh, thank you for partnering with our team.
Yes, thank you so much, and happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas. Okay, so we don't need to receive it, just, we're just?
Yeah, just receive and file the twenty-twenty-three community income survey report.
Do we also have this budgeted for, for the next rounds of, it needs to be done every five years, right, is what the ideal for grant applications is?
Mm-hmm.
If we can just make sure that it's, that it's part of the regular funding cycle, uh-huh.
Right, ten, however many thousand a year into it.
Yeah, thousands every year to make it work each five years, yeah.
Right, that's a good idea. Okay, so, receive and file.
Yep.
Okay, item nine.
All right, item nine is the first reading of an ordinance amending Title Three, Chapter Three-Dash-One, Section Three-Dash-One, Point One-One-Six, revocation or suspension of licenses of the Avalon Municipal Code. Uh, the proposed ordinance revision will expand grounds for business license suspension or revocation to include non-compliance with any local, state, or federal regulation. Uh, tonight, the recommended action is to introduce and waive the further readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Title Three, Chapter Three-Dash-One, Section Three-Dash-One, Point One-One-Six, revocation or suspension of licenses of the Avalon Municipal Code. Um, you have any questions for staff on this?
No, and, um, who's gonna, enforcement seems to be an ongoing issue with everything, because we have so, so many limited, limited people. So, some of this might fall under finance, some of this might fall under code, some of this might fall under fire department. Okay, all right. So I guess the staff has no problem with, with having to do the work?
I think part of the intent of this, Mayor, is that when licenses come up for renewal, if we know that they're in violation of some law and stuff, we can actually not, um, issue the license again, or, you know, so that's really the benefit of this, is gonna be, when they have to come to get their license renewed, we can decide not to.
We have, we have teeth.
Yes.
Okay, so let's say you have teeth because I did something wrong with weddings by the sea. Okay, I know. So, then what happens? You say, you're in violation, you're not gonna renew my permit, but let's say I have, like, a, a real business that there's money that comes in every day, and you can just go in and shut them down, lock their door?
Well, what we, the intent is to bring them in compliance, always to bring them in compliance and pay any, you know, wanting in compliance with the law, pay any back penalties or fees, so that they continue to operate but lawfully. So, first, we're gonna try to bring people in compliance, and then we'll use this as a tool in, in case we can't bring them into compliance.
Okay.
And, and just of note, the, um, the process is similar to our transient rental license revocation-suspension process, so the ci, the, uh, finance director would actually present a case to city council, and you would make the determination to actually do the revocation or suspension. So it's kind of a, a last resort. It's a, a big stick that we don't, hopefully won't have to use.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Then I'll make a motion to introduce and waive the all further readings of an ordinance, ordinance of the City of Avalon, amending Title Three, Chapter Three-Dash-One, Section Three-Dash-One Dot One-One-Six, revocation or suspension of license of the Avalon Municipal Code.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, if no further discussion, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Ayes have it.
All right, uh, so item number ten, um, is, uh, transportation permit application related to Avalon Destinations LLC. Uh, so on October twenty-first, uh, Sherry Cobb of Avalon Destinations submitted a transportation permit application to provide, uh, courtesy transportation between transient rental customers, um, in their arrival/departure locations, specifically at the Cabrillo Mall heliport, um, in the area of the Green Pier, uh, to one of four, uh, vacation rentals. Um, so the recommended action tonight is to discuss and provide direction to staff. If consensus to approve is reached, make the affirmative finding that the criteria set forth in Avalon Municipal Code, Section Five-Dash-Fourteen Point Zero Four, has been met, and then Ms. Cobb is here this evening.
Great. Good evening. Did you wanna say just a couple of things, uh, before we discuss?
Yep, most of it is, um, just to be able to get more information to the renters, teach them how to use the golf cart, because I've seen too many of them smashed right into the wall, not knowing how to go into reverse, so, and get into accidents right after they get in the golf cart. So I kind of started picking them up. I thought since I wasn't charging, it was okay, and I wasn't accepting tips or anything, but it was, it's more to get them accustomed to it and to let them know the drivers has, have to be twenty-one years or older, or I take the golf cart away for the remainder of their vacation. And a lot of times, they kept saying, oh, I didn't read that in the paperwork or in your email, when I keep, you know, sending it to them, and so now I verbally say it, and you understand, okay, you, these kids can't drive, okay. And one time, even though they agreed to that, the wife let a kid drive, and I went and took the golf cart away. So, a lot of it is just, you know, I, I like to get to know who's renting them and just teach them about the different golf carts. And it's only like Hamilton Cove, and that, yeah, I have two, maybe three places coming up in Hamilton Cove.
So what, what's on, um, Eucalyptus Avenue, Sherry?
Um, that's, one of the vacation rentals is above me, and only one time I picked somebody up because they were elderly and they were the owner's uncle. And so I did add that, saying, you know, there was one time I did it as a favor to the owners. But that's where one rental is, and Overlakal is another one, and then the others are in Hamilton Cove.
And so there, right now, there's a total of how many?
Right now, there's a total of four rentals that I have. One more is coming on, and I'm keeping my business small, so I can do personal attention.
So let me ask you, are, do you own all of these properties? I know you don't own them.
No, I don't own any of them.
So you're trying to do this as a favor to the landlords or to the owners?
Yes, yes.
And why would you do this for nothing?
I don't want the carts wrecked. I mean, I started it when I owned my property, and I did it for my own personal one, but I actually, with that one, I used to get some, a ride up and bring the cart down, and they would follow me, unless there were four people, but when there were six. So I started it with mine, the people liked that I was doing that, and appreciated that. I mean, I can always start charging them.
Well, well, so, what's to say, then, that once, if this were approved, that everybody that has a, a unit out at Hamilton Cove would call you to give free transportation so that they didn't have to use the cab service?
Oh, well, I was only doing it with my units.
Okay, but now you're talking about?
Well, no, I, I was still talking about my units, but, I mean, I, I wouldn't do it if, I did do, if I did open it up to everybody else, I would definitely have a charge. No, these were just the units that I manage.
I, I guess I'm not seeing where it will stop, I guess.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, there's a disconnect between the staff report and, and your application, which says one thing, which says it's for transportation to and from where they arrive in Avalon and to the transient rentals. Nothing in the application talks about them driving around other than transportation to and from.
Yeah, I'm not driving them anywhere. They have their golf carts up there.
Right.
Yeah, so it's not like a pickup service, and they wanna go out and party and need a ride back. No, they have to stay sober and drive their golf cart.
Okay, but did I kind of hear that, that number could increase? Because if, let's say I owned a place at Hamilton Cove, and I could say, hey, Sherry, why don't you pick up my people, too, 'cause I want you to train them how to use my golf cart, or get familiar with golf carts?
I haven't opened it up to that.
We could limit it to the properties listed.
Right, the ones on the report, right?
Yes.
So only from the mall to further states?
Yes, you could limit it.
Either way, or, if you want me to open it up, then I'll report all of it and not give free, and I can charge.
Yes.
I, you know, I'm willing to do it either way. I mean, I'd love to get the money for it.
No, I know.
But, to me, it's just easier teaching them how to use a golf cart and not having a problem while they're here.
I totally understand.
And, too, when the golf cart breaks, I've had to go pick them up at eleven o'clock at night, take them out, and deal with the golf cart later.
And if you're not available, who, who would take your place?
They'd take a cab.
Okay, you just say their service is not available?
Yeah, I said, it's only available if I'm available.
Okay, okay. Just trying to get right.
So, yeah, so I mean, I can open it up either way. If you want me to just keep it with my business, which is what I've been doing, that was my plan, but I'm happy to give others a ride if I could charge.
Yeah, well, that's a whole other issue.
Right, that's what I mean.
That's part of this application.
Let's not open that can of worms.
And, what, okay. All right, does anybody have questions, if you are, before we talk about it?
My only que, my, my only question is just, and it's not maybe a question for you so much as a question for council and staff, but, um, looking at courtesy shuttles and courtesy vehicles, um, one, if there's, um, I guess my questions are a handful, but I, I was trying to figure out how to ask these questions. So, one, if you're using your own personal vehicle, it's a residential vehicle that's already here, and giving people a ride, I don't know that I have an issue with that. I appreciate the extra layer of protection that this may provide, because it would require at least a permit and/or additional insurance, and/or additional, like, business license to operate, even though it's not a financial business? No, yes?
Um, yeah, in, insurance for sure, and, um, she's already paid the, uh, application and permit fees for the transportation permit.
Okay.
I have full insurance to cover as anybody who's in it. I have the top.
Perfect.
So.
Yeah, so that's, that's good.
It's all covered, and it's my personal.
Yeah.
Vehicle. It's not my commercial.
Right.
Autoette.
Right.
That's a little scion. I can't get anyone in that. Just my equipment.
The two-door spec can hold one other person, um, so.
So, I mean, do I need a permit to continue just to give free rides to only my guests?
Um, so the municipal code does outline, uh, transportation permit is required for courtesy, uh, shuttles and vehicles, yeah.
And then, the secondary question to that is just that, if this is approved, that the, um, it's not adding an additional, from what I can see, traffic to the road. Your vehicle's already in use, you're already providing these rides, and it hasn't been detrimental to anyone. The question I have is just ensuring- The question I have is just ensuring that this permit goes with the particular vehicle. It doesn't get to be transferred to an additional commercial vehicle if asked for, those types of things. Those would have to go back before the transportation board, right, your officer?
Yeah, we can make that a condition.
Okay.
I'm planning on buying another vehicle.
I know. I, I'm just, the, you're not the only instance, though, cause I have a feeling there may be other homeowners that may ask or request to do something similar, potentially, not everybody, but.
Yeah.
Well, and, and that, when we touched on that earlier?
The can of worms I'm worried about is just if we open the can of worms, are there things that we wanna try to avoid or foresee in doing this, so?
Can I also put a stipulation in that it, that when you're at the mall, you can't pick up in the parking lot? You'd have to pick up on the street?
I don't have an issue with that.
Oh, I can't pull in the golf cart line up? I don't park in the middle.
No, no, go, no, you're not even supposed to, that's really no parking in the parking, where everybody parks right now.
Well, I know, but I stay in my car.
That doesn't matter. It's, it's just, it just adds to the congestion.
Right, but I can still pick up my friends there, right? On my personal time. Okay.
Now people will be taking pictures of your people. Is that a friend?
Right, is it a friend or a resident? Yeah.
I know, cause I haven't driven anybody but Jeffrey and his family. I'm like, this is a friend. I'm not driving any people.
So, again, for, for all of us and for staff, and who might come by tomorrow and say they want one because they have a place that somebody else that might wanna do this. I don't, I don't know how, where it stops or what, or what.
Well, I think the issue is if they're doing it, it's part of their business. If it's attached to their business, they need a permit to do it. And the precedent that you're setting today is there are no new vehicles, cause this is an existing vehicle.
Right.
And it's only two, you know, from one location to another location. And then in that instance, you could look at the municipal and say, "They're not adding traffic. They're just replacing it with something that's already there" because people already have to get from where they arrive to their destination. She's just doing this with an existing vehicle in Avalon, not adding any.
Right.
And, I mean, if you want them to take a taxi, then my plan would just go meet them at the units.
Right.
I mean, I have no problem telling them no.
You know, I mean, it's a concierge-like type service. It's very, very nice.
They like it.
Yes.
They say that in the reviews and stuff.
Yeah, I would too.
And then they don't have to wait in the long taxi line because I'm there waiting for them.
Right, right. Any other comments of us? And then we'll throw it out to see if anybody else wants to comment.
Did Mary have any comments online or?
Mary, where?
Well, yeah, Sherry, I was just, uh, kinda want, so you're just being a nice guy, just concierge, just picking them up at the boat and taking them to their place. That's it.
That's what I've been doing.
So, yeah, so you just wanted to, uh, uh, teach the people out at Hamilton. But, you know, Overlook Hall and Trima, I mean, Eucalyptus don't have any carts, right?
Yeah, no, I only did that once and if I just mentioned it, if anybody saw me that one time. And that was a favor to the owners. So that was a friend of the owner's. So that I don't expect any, ever to have to pick up there. I send them a map.
Okay, and so you said you have like three properties or something like here, but it says soon I will have four properties in Hamilton, Overlook Hall and two on Eucalyptus Avenue. So that's seven, right?
Yeah, well, the other one on Eucalyptus, I think I'm passing on for other reasons that I can explain later.
Well, I, I.
So, and then, yeah, so there's definitely one I have a contract, the other one I'm waiting for a contract in Hamilton Cove. The other one, they just bought it and closed it and I haven't heard back from them. So.
Most of the permits that have been issued for hotels or shuttle services are because they're out of the way or they're uphill or something like that.
Right.
Would it be possible to scratch Eucalyptus?
Yeah, just write that off. Yeah, I just listed it, like I said, cause one time I delivered people there.
Can we take you, we're just, it's?
I don't know that it bothers me.
I don't have a problem with Eucalyptus.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, you're not bothered?
Yeah, I just went up the alley, dropped them off in the alley, but, you know, I doubt I'll ever have to do it again.
But that, but at least it's covered.
And if anything, it's someone who knows what direction to go on the alley.
Yeah.
Right. Good point.
And I could get closer going up the alley than a taxi cab could on the ass.
Yes.
You know, that's the hard part with Eucalyptus. Even dropping off at the end of the street is enclosed.
Okay, council, but your pleasure.
You just need recommendation or you need a motion approval?
Approval and, uh, a statement that the findings required for the permit have been satisfied.
So moved.
Okay, so moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second. Any comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Item number eleven.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Sherry.
Alright, item number eleven is related to the transportation permit application for Icon of Avalon. Um, so on September twenty seventh, the city received a transportation permit application. Um, on October third, the permit application was presented to city council at the regularly scheduled staff meeting, or meeting. After discussion and concerns, the applicant has proposed an amendment to the initial application. Um, just to summarize, Icon of Avalon is proposing to start the business with five electric vehicle rental carts, um, one EV utility cart and four six-passenger EV carts. Um, secondarily, Icon Avalon is proposing to meet with the city manager in April twenty twenty-four to review and address any concerns and, or complaints received by the city and response by public safety. At that time, Icon of Avalon would request approval for an additional five EV rental carts for a new fleet total of ten. Um, last, Icon of Avalon is proposing to meet with the city manager again in June twenty twenty-four to request the addition of five EV rental golf carts for a fleet total of fifteen.
I have a question. Somebody asked me, is there anywhere in anything we've done that says there's a maximum, I think there's what, a maximum of a hundred and twenty with the two rental companies? But did we ever put a maximum, maximum that says, "That shall not have any more than so many on public streets?"
I don't recall you setting a, a maximum for that. I think what you would have to do is again, looking at what they're proposing and given your knowledge of the capacity of, of the streets, whether you can make the finding that this will not result in excessive traffic.
Right, right.
And I would say that, that the one thing is that although the request is that they meet with the city manager, we need to make clear that they, they can meet with the city manager, but approval rests with the city council.
Do you have anything you wanna say, Scott?
No, I certainly do.
Of course you do.
Yeah, good evening, uh, city council. Thank you for allowing us to present our revised business plan. Uh, from our last meeting, that was your suggestion, was to come back with a revision that would be able to work conducively together. Uh, before I go into the actual revision of the plan, which was already just presented, uh, I'd like to give you just a few updates on some progress that we've done since the last meeting. We've been in, in discussions with the island company, the city manager, to discuss possible locations for parking spaces as well as inserting, uh, charging stations within the city of Avalon. So we are progressively trying to be a partner in this program to assist in making sure that there would be charging and parking, uh, stations. Uh, we're in discussions also with Southern California Edison, uh, in assistance for those charging stations, which there are many, many grants out there for. The community response has been great with this. We've actually had a lot of, uh, great conversations with locals who are, uh, they're incentivized by the green aspect of having, uh, low-speed vehicles and electric golf carts. Um, there's been a lot of questions. What we found is it's required us to provide quite a bit of education. You know, the, the newer golf carts are not like the old golf carts. And so we've been able to have those one-on-one discussions with many people and found that we've had a tremendous amount of support from the community. In fact, uh, we've sold multiple units already. So I've been acting as a representative for San Diego and selling carts on the island. Um, also, last week, I attended a, a, a meeting which was a great meeting. It was over at the USS, not Nicholson, sorry, wrong word. But what it was, was a VBOC opening, um, for, uh, veterans for small business. Um, at that meeting, um, it was amazing. You know, they were, they were talking about how there's different grants for EV carts, um, for small businesses, veteran-owned businesses. I had a great opportunity to sit down and talk with her, Linda Chico, regarding this. And she provided, um, her, uh, uh, opinion of support with this as well. Um, also, uh, Shalon Garcia, I met her. She is also, uh, under Mayor Gavin, I'm sorry, under Gavin Newsom's office and she's the grant supervisor for doing a lot of these programs. So she also would like to talk further about doing these programs. So I think what is important with this is it just goes to show that you need a business that's gonna come in to help support the initiative that the city and the county has for going electric. It's not just a business coming in saying, "We wanna open up a sales, a service, and then a rental business." What we're saying is we wanna be a key component in this to help turn Avalon into something that can be electric. And it's gonna require a partner for sure to do that. I think, um, listening to the, uh, the stats from the, uh, survey, it just emphasizes even more that you guys need a partner for this. Because, uh, you know, if seventy-five percent don't see themselves going to electric, it's completely, um, I would think a good majority of that is because of the infrastructure base. And so we need to have that partnership. Situations like what the fire chief mentioned about a fire with a golf cart, having someone who is certified to be able to put in those batteries is very important. And that's where the service aspect of our business comes into place. So, um, just to reemphasize, that revised business plan is, is we're, we're looking for five rental golf carts to assist in the aspect of the business, um, for being able to fund, you know, retail location, service center, employees. We're gonna, we're gonna need the cash source because purchasing of a golf cart is not something that just, you know, you get a phone call and you, you sell the cart right away. Um, it takes sometimes weeks. It could take months. We're working with, uh, Icon, which is, we're working closely with a bank that's gonna help to provide, uh, extra services for the locals. So it doesn't just have to be a cash purchase. We're gonna be able to offer the financing, which I think that will help with the, the, the community as well. So. But yeah, getting the five golf carts for the first three months will help to fund things. It'll also help to, for us to show and set a track record so that you guys can review this once we go to the next level requesting five additional carts.
So in your discussions about parking spaces and charging, where, where is that? I mean, not where the, is the location, but where is that in the process?
It's, we're still in the infancy stage of it. Um, we have, uh, come up with several locations that would be key, good points for having stations set up. But I'm not at liberty to go directly into those specific locations at this point, but we are, that is the goal.
Well, are you, are you putting, uh, charging spaces where, where you're going to be keeping them and then delivering them to the people or bringing the people to them?
For the rental side, yes. So I have a warehouse right now. I'm looking for an expansion of a warehouse as well in, in the negotiations of that as well. And then we need to bring it up to code, you know, by having all the proper charging stations in place. And then that's where we would store our carts off-street overnight. Our, our rental golf carts will be delivered as a concierge-type service. And they'll be for full day, um, or half-day rentals.
So the ones that you will be sitting, will be sitting in summer, you really won't be removing them out of there once they're in there? Because I know the other day it was parked illegally. We were chatting because it was just right after.
Right.
But, so they are not gonna be going in and out of that stall?
No, no. In fact, uh, the landlord that I've spoke to stated our, our golf carts that would be in the showroom, he would prefer just to, for insurance purposes, not to have the batteries put in them. So they'll actually just sit as showroom models with our walls. We'll have accessories and so forth for people to come in.
In terms of the plan, um, I appreciate your plan to say to meet in April of twenty twenty-four. But I think that something like that would be flexible, correct?
Well, I think what you're saying here is if, if you would agree to these conditions, that you will at least consider it in April twenty twenty-four. It's not gonna come before. He'll, he'll wait. And then at that point, then the city manager can decide whether to bring it forward to the council or not.
Okay, yeah. Sometimes how quickly or slowly things happen to try to set yourself up to a date when, you know, doing these things. Well, council, who's got some comments?
So, yeah, I, I have something. Um, I'm confused, cause the last time you were before us, um, and you had the whole twenty that you were proposing, you said that you already had a facility and charging and you were all ready to go. And now you're saying you're in negotiation. Is that just for the expansion or?
That, that was actually, that, for the business itself, we already have a location. Uh, we're talking about being able to bring more parking spaces, uh, as well as battery charging stations to the community. Because from the last meeting, I believe congestion was one of the biggest concerns, so we had to come up with a way to alleviate that.
Okay, well, just knocking it down to five, with the potential to go to fifteen, um, in my opinion, is still congestion. And, um, and you said that you've, you've been an ambassador of Icon and doing so well that you, you've sold several already, which is yay, great. There, it's a beautiful vehicle. I love the vehicle. Uh, don't get me wrong there, but, um, you know, I don't, I didn't see, you know, Buffalo Motors never rented, the Yamaha Shop never rented, and they both sell vehicles as well. So I think that it's, it's doable without the rental aspect. So that's just my opinion.
Yeah, not according to my business model. It would not work.
Well, I, you know, I, I definitely am a proponent of electricity, of, of electric vehicles. I just don't know how big, you know, going down the line. And I wouldn't let, you know, I wouldn't say, "Oh, five vehicles, fine." And then I guess you come back in however how many months and let's say the council goes, "Nope, I'm not gonna put it anywhere because there is a lot of congestion." Where does that put you?
It still puts us at five. I mean, we'll still run to five. You folks asked us to come back with a revision that we felt that we could, you know, give us time to be able to build up the business. And so it's gonna, it's gonna require to have some cash flow.
I totally understand. And you're still only looking at half-days and full-days?
And full days.
And then, so the other golf cart rental places have their marshal that drives around with it. They do a good job. And I don't know how that would happen for you.
So one of the discussions we had with the city manager was that we actually have transponders that can go on the vehicles and we have the ability to be able to monitor the vehicles electronically. So as opposed to having one person that's driving around trying to monitor carts based on line of sight, we actually have the ability to look at them via satellite. If we see someone going down a road that's not supposed to be going down that, that way, we can deploy.
Is it camera too? Do you have the ability to see if they're drinking in the vehicle or is it just satellite location only?
This is just satellite location. Yeah, we go back.
I guess the thing is, are they, are they either at Von's, Abe's, or Avalon Liquor? I mean, cause I know the guys, the guys that do the, um, the marshaling, that's where they see a lot of their people go and they, and they're very diligent about, especially Eric, I think, about, "Excuse me, I can hold that booth for you," or, uh, you know, but again, the concept is a little different is that they're not gonna be driving around for four to eight hours on this thing. And, and then they'll just have to know, so, so let's say I have, I'm getting a vacation rental, okay? Which they don't have vehicles, but I can rent one from you.
Correct.
And then I can have it all day and then before whatever time it goes back into there.
Correct. It also goes to the comment we made last time about folks that come in that have ADA issues. It also goes to the comment we made last time about folks that come in that have ADA issues.
Right.
You know, they check in, they come in through the express. We have the ability to go ahead and have a concierge, uh, cart right there, ready to go for their family. And they don't have to push in a wheelchair.
Not in the drive-through on the street. If that's what we're doing to Sherri, that's what we would have to do to you as well.
So, um, real quick, Annie, sorry. I know the other two, uh, rental golf cart companies are going electric as well, are, are also talking to Edison. So I guess, and I love your business plan, I, I really do, and I love where you guys are headed. My only concern for me is still congestion. So do we have any transportation survey we can look at to look at numbers? Because I really do like this plan, but if, if we have too much, then it, I, I have to say no. Even if it's fine.
Can I make a comment on what you just said? The, uh, the Conrados company just brought in twenty gas golf carts within the last thirty days. So they're not really in the business or in the direction of going electric, like what the city is wanting us to do. That, that to me looks like front-loading, trying to get as much gas as you can in here before the mandate goes into effect. So.
Okay, well, from what we're being told, it's not the R.
We're right out the door. We're right out the door, electric.
So I don't want to call anybody a liar.
Okay, so, uh, under the, under the municipal code, the, the burden is on the applicant to show that the requested vehicles will not have a deleterious impact on traffic congestion, traffic safety, noise, or air pollution. So it's their burden.
I don't have a problem with five. Because if that's going to turn people on to it and if that helps us get going a little bit quicker, I think that's, that's, that's great. And I like the EV cart to be utilized by residents. It's just that's, never mind. So I don't have a problem with a five.
Um, where is the warehouse and storage space currently, Scott?
It's, uh, on Pebley, it's six-one-six-D Pebley. It's right next to the old, uh, the laundry. I've had that place for about five years.
Okay.
So one of my concerns has always been, um, because the city gets the percentage. What do our, four percent, what do we get? Four percent?
That's a mad question.
Here he comes.
So the existing golf cart rentals pay admissions tax of four percent. I don't think there's any language related to the length of the rental. Uh, so it'd be my expectation that the ad tax of four percent would apply.
Okay, all right, four percent or whatever that is. Okay, one of the things that I also have wanted for a long time and it hasn't happened is, is numbered receipts. So a, a way that when the city does audits, that they can tell that it's been done correctly and that we are getting the percentage that we're entitled to.
And I have a wonderful track record with that because of running the short taxi business and jet ski. For many, many years, I've been audited multiple times. We have online booking systems and we'll do the same thing for the golf carts as well.
Thank you.
I have a couple of hesitations and concerns. One is congestion without having a traffic study, which we've been asking for and I believe have funding in the budget for. Two is that I appreciate what you're trying to do and I appreciate the plan and the type of vehicle that you want to bring. I also think the city isn't there yet, which, that question of putting the cart before the horse with having enough electricity from Edison, having enough infrastructure to fight fires. I know it's only five or ten or fifteen, but the potential for that concern to be an issue as we start to increase more without having a study done for the fire department to be able to understand what that staffing is going to be looking like, to know how to respond, and to ensure that every place that is built is built up to code or better than code for the sake of making sure that we're not seeing an increase of electrical surges and/or fires because of that. We know that that's already occurring over town as well. Like they're seeing that on a regular basis right now. Um, and because they have multiple departments and/or even cities to pull from, they're better equipped to respond than we even would be in that situation. So those are my two primary concerns. I would like to see before we move forward with this, a vehicle traffic study that looks at congestion primarily as the main need to be able to confirm, one, that we have an understanding of the capacity that we can have, and two, what that would look like if Scott was to go out and get his business and every other person that's able to get a vehicle was to go out and get a vehicle. Where does that put us? Or does that tip us over the point of both either comfort or complete congestion? Um, I have a really big problem just having, working with, having worked previously with one of the golf cart companies and seeing and hearing the golf carts come down view-daloo every day. Um, the number of times that that is a brake screech on that road coming down the hill because people aren't paying attention, are driving drunk, are driving while on their phone, and driving on their phone is everyone in town, not just rental golf carts. So I'm not putting this on just rental golf carts. But that four-hour, the half-day or full-day stretch, I agree that it would be such a great service to offer to people. I do not trust people enough to have it. There's a reason why they make them check back in every couple hours. It's because oftentimes that two hours is enough to determine like, oh, they were driving drunk and now they shouldn't be in a golf cart again for another two hours or four hours or six hours.
That may be their clientele, but our clientele is definitely, from what I'm looking at and get, and talking to boaters that come in, I get it asked daily about having full-day rentals because they're doing functions at Descanso Beach.
Sure.
There's multiple, so it's not just the person getting off the cruise ship that is going to end up going to the Marlin Club, you know, and then jump back in a car.
But I think that we have as many corporate people, people coming off the helicopter, people coming off of boats that are just as drunk and fun as everybody else is. So that's the hard part for me is there's no way to police who's going to end up being that person that does that. And that's, that, it's not just for, it's not, it's not just what you're asking for, but that duration of time is what worries me overall. Um, those are just some of the concerns I have right now. I don't, I, I want to see us move forward, but I also think there needs to be some things in place before we do that.
I would like to comment though, because I have an electric golf cart. The braking system is entirely different. You take your foot off the gas and it stops.
That's great.
So you don't, you don't do those screeching stops.
That's good, that's great.
So that, I love my electric golf cart.
Yeah.
Stacy, did you want to come in?
Yes, I did. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, Stacy Amerantos. Um, I will be the chief operations for Icon of Avalon, and I just wanted to address some of your issues, Lisa.
Yeah.
Um, first of all, I just want to say, like any of the golf cart rental companies, we are not out here policing. We are not the sheriffs. We are not going to police whether you are driving drunk or not. That's up to our sheriffs to do that. Now, if you're checking in, just like our jet ski business, and we can tell that you've been drinking, obviously, we are not going to run it.
Right.
Um, one of your other concerns is fire safety and, um, Captain Algaria and I have a long history of working together when I was CNO at the hospital. And I have already met with him and I will continue to meet with him because I do want them involved. And I do just want to say the past fires that you've had here, um, those have been because of illegal parts. And so I think, in my opinion, even more reason to have Icon and a manufacturer that are using manufactured recommended parts.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate that your vehicles will likely be safer because you will have access to those and be able to do that on-site, which is great. But it still, um, leaves the question regarding the infrastructure that needs to be built for your location in that that's a new thing for the city to have to manage. It's not, I'm not saying necessarily no because of that one point, but it's just the amount of vehicle charging stations in one area and being wired for that and having to go through code approval for that is just part of my concern that we are not experts at yet. We haven't done it before with an expanded amount of capacity, whether that's looking at any location in town that wants to also have electric golf carts for rent. Um, so I know that it's just something that I think we need to have a little more planning and preparedness on before we jump into it. I don't know, Chief, if you want to talk to, speak to that, please, but, um, I just don't, I just want to, you know, I want to ensure that whatever we're setting up, we're setting everyone up for success and not failure.
So I'll just be blunt, the batteries scare me. Um, after the flood in Florida, the hurricanes, all those cars were underwater and all of a sudden they all just, most of them started burning. Salt water doesn't mix with the batteries. So like the leak on Clarissa that's been there for two weeks, we're driving over salt water. I, I just test drove an electric one the other day and went really fast. I don't want one. There's still some things that we're learning. There was a fire in Carson. There's one, there's one battery fire a day in LA County right now and it's going up. They just started taking stats on it. There was a fire in Carson, uh, about a month and a half ago, end of August. It burned for fifty-six hours. There were units there for fifty-six hours. We cannot be there for fifty-six hours here.
It was an electric car?
It was a car, electric car. There's still a lot we're learning about it. We've got all salt water on the flats, um, salt water and that batteries don't mix. Where are we going to put them? There's stuff that we're currently talking about. Where are we going to put them? How are we going to get them to a place that they can be safe?
Well.
Like, and the building, I would, if it passes, that you put that John and myself inspect everything like we did with the e-bikes before it opens.
My concern is just with it being at Pebley as well and the flooding that we've seen there recently. And I don't expect that to get any less. So having something in place that would make sure that if there was flooding again, you guys were okay, that that wouldn't enter into the space where you're charging them. I think there's just some of those things that we don't necessarily have in place yet that I would like to see before we move forward this. It's not saying no, but I just, I don't, I don't want to run into something because we're excited about the idea of it, which I am. I'm, I'm supportive of this in, in theory completely. But just the, the things that need to be in place before we start looking at that or how we need to have code set up for it in terms of having ordinances ready for the building of and safety of those areas is what concerns me the most right now.
I think we need a, I mean, it's a great idea. That's why I would like all of us to partner, even with Edison. Because I'd like to hear from Edison as well. I just don't feel comfortable making this decision yet. I think there's more to be done. It should happen and it will happen. I just don't think we're there yet.
So then are, are we saying we're going to put a moratorium on electric golf carts? Because people can still buy them. There's plenty of them in town here.
Right.
I hear the concern.
I think there's a distinction between residential, um, electrical vehicles or, or golf carts where they don't need a transportation permit versus a transportation permit which requires you comply with additional criteria in the municipal code to get it, one of which being that there's a need for it, two, that it is not, um, the enemy, that it, that it is, um, will not have a deleterious impact on traffic congestion, traffic safety, noise, and air pollution. And so you could, you could come up with some kind of traffic studies to show that. And again, so it's on, it's on your burden and also to come forward with material from Edison that they think that there's sufficient power in the city, um, to, to provide for this optional activity. Again, this is a business, it's not a residential thing where residents have a right for these vehicles.
Mayor Marshall, we've received some public comments on the ASST.com.
Okay.
Dear Mayor and City Council, we do not need more elec, excuse me, we do not need more rental golf carts on the streets of Avalon or taking up parking spaces in town. Please do not approve this application. Respectfully, Leslie Warner.
I'm sorry, I think we're thinking.
Yeah, sorry.
I like your ideas. I like where you're going with this, but to be honest, this community isn't ready for it. Which is a shame because you're looking at a different, totally different clientele, um, using this type of golf cart. I have people constantly asking me, "Can I get a golf, golf cart for the day?" And I tell them no. But we're just not ready for it.
I do have a question then. Then what is the city plan to be ready to move towards this?
That's, that would be, that would be a really good question.
Because you have federal, state, and county regulations.
Right. I mean, I think the, the request to have a transportation study done in general is one, but you're saying if, if they were to also bring one forward that would show it wouldn't provide extra congestion?
Again, they have the burden as the applicant to come forward showing that it will not create congestion and will not have a deleterious impact on traffic safety. So they could provide information for that. They could provide information that there's adequate infrastructure for electrical vehicles for what they want to do. And they could also provide information that they have a storage plan or a, a specific plan for, uh, to mitigate any battery fires.
Okay. Um, as a city, are we planning to do that as well, like partner up with Edison? Because I know we, we're going to get charging stations as well, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly. City staff have been in contact with Silacal Edison as well as vendors, you know, for our transit program. Um, we're moving to electric, uh, vehicles, so yes.
So, so, okay, we're moving to electric vehicles. We got a fire chief that's concerned with electric vehicles. We got the state saying we need to go electric. You know, we're, how does it come to a head in a, in a, in a traffic study? First of all, we don't have any money budgeted for it, so it couldn't start.
I thought we had requested it to start to building that account up for, to do the traffic.
Mad, is there money in there for a traffic study?
And I thought there was one when Bob was working with the ATP, but I think it was just specific to that project only, right?
I don't believe we have a specific traffic study in the budget, but it's something if directed by council, we could amend the budget to include.
Yes, please.
Can we direct it now?
We could amend the budget and then go out. So you're talking months and months and months.
That's if the city did it, or they could commission their own traffic study.
Right.
And prevent, prevent information to, to the city.
Well, that, that wouldn't be fair for them to do a traffic study for the whole of Avalon. That does not seem appropriate for five golf carts.
Well, I mean, I feel like that information we need regardless because we're going to move forward and go green. We need to know how it's going to work.
Maybe we won't go green. Because.
We have to, but I just, I think we're just not there yet is the issue.
Even, I remember one of the conferences we went to, we met with one of the gentlemen that does charging stations and we explained how the city works. And he's like, "I've never done anything like that before." So I, this is going to be a unique situation.
They've done them with cities and they got them, uh, even charging stations everywhere.
Question, um, charging stations, what are your, what, what would your charging stations look like out there? Because I can tell you what the ones at Mount Ada looked like when we had electric golf carts.
So, uh, Todd, who was here the last visit, he set up several charging stations on the mainland, um, in different communities because the LSVs have been, they're coming up everywhere.
But ju, I, because when you guys send out a golf cart, it's going to be fully charged, right? You're not going to send one that's not.
Correct.
Unless they're traveling for eight hours straight, they're not going to drain that battery.
Correct.
Um, at Mount Ada, when we had our electric golf carts, we had a little box with the plug and you plugged it in when you came back to the hotel. So.
Not like that.
Okay.
Ours is just a regular three-prong plug. That component you're talking about is actually built into the cart.
Okay.
So you just have to have a, a single plug. But an actual charging station could look something to the effect of like a Tesla style where you swipe a credit card and then it starts charging. And you get so many, you know, hours.
But to get you guys started, you don't know, you don't have to have that Tesla-type.
No, you don't.
Okay.
Well.
I think what I'm asking is to continue this until we have some more info and data and can meet, confirm where your locations are that your parking vehicles, confirm what it is that that plan looks like and have a review of that. it is that that plan looks like and have a review of that by the inspector and the chief. Confirm, I don't know, I would like to have the vehicle study done before we do this. I think that, I think that we can keep saying five or 10 or 15 doesn't make an impact, but it does make an impact. And how many other businesses want to also get in on this if we're adding more vehicles into the mix?
I respect your opinion.
Thank you, but disagree with it.
But disagree. I think this is, because it's only five, I think this is a perfect opportunity to do a little test site, knowing that he's working with the chief, he's working with Edison. This is winter time, so I think that's a good time as well. So I think I'm standing alone on this one, but I would.
Once I hear the chief say I feel comfortable with this, they're set, I think I'd be more at ease knowing that this will be a great trial run. But until then, if he's not comfortable.
Sorry, G.
I, I trust him.
Did he chime in on our, did, did the chief chime in when we were on these things that we're now purchasing for the city, the electric vehicles?
Where, oh, I wrote it down. I'm not opposed to it. There's a lot of things that have to happen.
Yeah.
We need to educate us on the charging stations and all the stuff that's out there, the public, and then we got to talk about disposal of them and who's responsible for that, how we getting them out of here, where we're going to storm. In the meantime, we can't just leave a battery, especially an old one or if it's damaged. There's a lot of things we need to work on and talk about with Edison and then are there poles in front of there to protect someone from driving into it? There's, there's a lot of questions.
Would it be appropriate, the next council meeting, did I just write that down?
November 28.
Thank you. Is it appropriate to think that we can get some of those answers by the next council meeting or how much time do you think you would need to gather that information?
Scott and I are both in agreement that if we do not have approval at this meeting for the rentals, we will not be starting this business and we will act as icon representatives out of San Diego and we will continue to sell carts on the island.
See, and then, okay, so you have a successful cart selling business without any of these questions answered. So what is, what is better to have, or have somebody who's in the business who knows, who has a mechanic versus people that are just going out and buying them or any, even my golf cart, you know, which isn't an icon? So, so we've been doing this with, without the expertise of the, the chief or having any of these things answered in the past.
I, I would just like to state that, you know, Scott and I have been in this community a long time. Scott is a proven good businessman for this community.
Yeah.
And we are absolutely here to partner with the city, with the residents, with the fire captain, with Edison, with the island company. We are not looking to ruffle any feathers. We're looking to go green, which is our initiative from federal, state, county.
We appreciate you guys for doing that too, so don't, don't take it.
It's not personal, yeah.
We just also have to do our due diligence to make sure we make this decision properly and educated.
And I absolutely respect that. I just want people to know that I am working with Edison, I am working with the fire chief. We are doing those things.
Right. And I, I don't think it's anything that you're, that you're not doing. I think it's that everyone else that's part of this discussion just isn't to the point where they need to be at yet to make it a safe go this first time to ensure that we don't run into those issues down the road. That's, that's, the points that the chief just brought up are ones that concern me regarding how we manage this. And part of the responsibility that we have to look at is, is looking at those things. So I would hope that if you would say that we could take another 15 or even 30 days to look at this, that you would consider not dropping the business idea. It's with the goal of seeing if we can make this happen, but there's just a lot of things that are not answered yet that need to be answered. That's, that's where I'm at personally.
Me too.
So it doesn't look like this is going to pass even though we have to vote on it. But, and then it's, it back into your court to see, to keep us informed and see what you want to do.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you want to just withdraw it or do you want to ask for a continuance? What do you want to do?
Why don't, why don't we do a continuance through the next meeting at least in that way?
Well, no, but it might take longer than that. So we'll just say continue it whenever you call us and say you're ready, then we'll, because it might not be two weeks.
So what we're going to do with, with the appropriate motion would be to table this and table this and if you want to give any instructions to them for information that might help you in a future decision, you could, you could do that as well or you could just table it?
I would make a motion to table it and then ask that we have city staff and Edison and you guys meet together. For city staff, Chief, if you can go ahead and address those concerns that you brought up and develop a plan over the next two weeks if possible, or if not, create a timeline for what that plan would be and when you think you'd be able to implement it. And looking specifically at if we need to add additional staffing and/or any cost for, for disposal of the batteries when we have those in place. And then if I can ask that you guys would consider coming back to us, I just, I would like to have some of that info answered, especially regarding the location that you have out at Pebley and what type of mitigation would need to be made to be able to make it saltwater safe and ability to house what you need. I just want to make sure that we're covering our bases when it comes to what happens if and when, because it's going to happen at some point. That space has now gone underwater a couple of times over the past couple of years. I just don't want to see something happen both to your fleet if you get them and with staffing to have to deal with that and how we try to make sure that doesn't become an issue, whether it's creating an extra berm or creating space that would make it safe for those vehicles to be out there. Would you guys be open to doing that for a continuance of two weeks and we'll see where we can get to in that time?
Or actually.
For the next meeting, sorry, three weeks to the next meeting, the 28th.
Well, can't we just have an open continuance if we have 28?
Yeah, open continuance. I know, I just don't want to.
Because then we've got holidays coming up and stuff.
Right. I'm just trying to not make it so that it's drawn out for you guys. I would like to see answers come back in a timely manner.
Yeah, but I don't think we should put it, I think that would be their deadline, their date, I would think.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, did we need, was that a motion and a second or something?
There's a motion there.
So moved?
Table it.
Table it, motion to table.
Second.
I'll second.
Move to second before you comment. Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Okay, 12 and 13, and maybe we can get Scott Nelson, Scott Nelson.
That's a blast from the past.
Yep, on the boat.
Is this the last one?
No, Scott Jenkins.
Oh, to you.
Okay, sorry.
I'm his boss technically right now, which is kind of funny.
Oh, that is funny. Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, tonight, the city is proposing a, sorry, I'm lost here. The city's wastewater treatment plant operator, Perk Water Corporation, is completing major infrastructure repairs throughout the city wastewater treatment plant. Two projects of significance include the repair and replacement of a soffit located in the facility's basement and the rehabilitation of the wastewater treatment plant's chlorine contact tank. The recommendation, recommendation before you tonight is to make the affirmative finding that the city will not gain a competitive advantage by using the formal contract bid or other competitive procedure as outlined by the Avalon Municipal Code, section 3-4.11 subsection C. Two, authorize the procurement of supplies, equipment and services for the replacement and repair of the wastewater treatment plant sofit for not to exceed some of $65,000. And authorize the procurement of supplies, equipment and services for the replacement or repair of the wastewater treatment plant chlorine tank for not to exceed some of $145,000.
Okay.
Okay, so what makes this different is the procurement. So different from what we normally do, you know, it's, it's a competitive bid, but we are made aware that our contractor that was at Mole Phase 1 Slater Waterproofing was actually on the island mobilized doing private work. So, and we didn't have a bid set of documents, so we didn't put that effort in with, and that definitely has a dollar amount that is significant itself. So we were able to get a proposal from them for doing these repairs. And these are essential repairs for the wastewater treatment plant. One is the soffit, which is the ceiling in the basement, and so it's falling. So that means the concrete is falling down in the facility, 20 feet down, and it needs to be repaired because there's equipment down there and there's personnel down there. And the second one is the chlorine contact chamber. So that's the end of the process to, when, before it goes out to the ocean, before the sewer flow goes out to the ocean, it gets contacted with the chlorine. That's the final disinfection. And the walls, it's kind of like a serpentine set of walls where the chlorine is injected into that tank and it, they're deteriorating, the walls are deteriorating. So we need to get that done to stay in compliance with our permit for the plant. So we, we got the proposal from Slater and what they, they are specialists, they are a specialized contractor doing this type of work. They've been known to be qualified because of our other project. And so we saved the cost of getting a separate mobilization and then we saved the cost for the design materials because they knew exactly what to do to get, get it done. So all of those upfront costs give us extreme value on this and they're on the island ready to do the work this week, starting this week.
Any questions? Okay.
I'll make a motion to make the affirmative finding that the city will not gain a competitive advantage by using the formal contract bid or other competitive procedure as outlined by the Avalon Municipal Code, section 3-4 dot 111C. And two, authorize the procurement of supplies, equipment and services for the replacement and repair of the wastewater treatment plant sofit for not to exceed a sum of $65,000. And three, authorize the procurement of supplies, equipment and services for the replacement of the repair of the wastewater treatment plant chlorine tank for not to exceed a sum of $145,000.
I'll second, but just have one quick question, the contingency on this, because I know last time the work went over from the underwork, just wanted to make sure that that contingency fund was sufficient in your opinion to move forward with it.
It is.
Okay, thank you. Calling it out just in case.
With the information we have at hand, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll second.
I just wonder when the wastewater treatment plant will be in great shape and won't need stuff done for a while, because it comes up all the time.
When we get rid of the saltwater.
There's a lot of work to do there.
Still?
Yes, there's a lot of work.
Okay, I guess.
So the thing is, we are putting, throughout our system, we're putting in those key projects and we're getting them done.
Right, so, yeah, so I guess we'll find out next by Jake.
Our investment will pay off.
Capital improvement projects, sorry. Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thanks.
We need a vote, right?
Go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Can I ask before you present the next one, just as we're adding things to the budget tonight, can we please get a study of what it will cost to replace saltwater with freshwater or gray water for all of this as well?
Yes.
If we can start looking at that this year, that would be, I think, very wise.
Don't get, you can't give Bob more projects.
I'm not, Bob's, Bob, it's not going to be Bob's project, I'm just kidding. It is Bob's project, you're going to, you get to keep it, buddy.
Okay, thank, okay, now this is yours, this is yours too.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Intro it or?
No, you're, you're good, you got it.
Okay. So this item considered as authorizing solicitation, a request for bids for the construction of the contract for the five-corner intersection enhancement and safety improvement project. I'm working on this for a while. So approve the design and construction of the plant, plans of the project and then authorize the city manager as designated to modify the plans as needed for compliance with the funding agencies. So those are all things that help us as you approve the plans, that we have design immunity as this gets built and then it gets used finally. So it's an important step, that's why we bring that to you. So there really, there is still much to do to bid and award the project, but you know, as Devin had said, there's two meetings left within the year and we need to get this step out of the way so as we start approaching December that we can get this out to bid when we're ready. Okay, so that's what we're asking, is really to get this authorized so that we can go out for that solicitation. As we do get the bids back, we'll have the full financial analysis, we'll answer any questions that you have further on that bid process and then we'd be able to award the project. So that's why we're here in front of you tonight. We do have the exhibit of the plans up there in front of you right now, so you can see the extents of the project. And this has been through lots of community review and so we've been through the set of five years we've had, you know, the, the community meetings, the reach out with all the property owners, you know, the funding through several cycles and then receiving more funding through the active transportation plan. And I think that was the best thing that we saw and is that we get that extra $3.8 million to help fund this and send it all the way home. That's what we've been struggling with, is not having this, the funding to complete everything we want to do on this project. That being said, it also, if you look, we have that parking lot that gets built with this adjacent to city hall here. And all of those spots will have the infrastructure in for electric, electric carts, electric vehicles. So I know that we've had much of a discussion here tonight on that. And then there's also the ability, as we redo Tremont there, there's all the frontage on that for electrification there too. So, but that's for another, further discussion on another night, but just showing that we have been working on that so it's available, you know, for our discussion as we have people maybe in the flats that couldn't have charging in front of their own house, that it's going to be available here at city hall because we'll be doing all these improvements.
Okay, yeah, we definitely are going to have more conversations on this one.
Yeah, so I just want to make you aware of that, that that's all been considered and is in there.
Same considerations go for us.
So, any questions on where we're at or what our schedule is or?
I, I just want to make a comment before we, since this is something that I've been involved with since I was first elected to the city council in 2006.
Yes.
I would like to make the motion to authorize the solicitation of a request for bids for the construction contract for the five-corner intersection enhancement and safety improvement project. Two, approve the design and construction plans of the project. Three, authorize the city manager or his designee to modify plans as needed for compliance with the funding agencies. Because one of the things that drives me crazy is when I watch people going through this intersection, they slow down as they get to that weird, and it's like, okay, now you've got everybody waiting for you because you slowed down. People just do not know how to traverse this crazy intersection.
Even though no, there's never been an accident.
Well, you never want to have.
You just dig so.
No, no, because my daughter's in construction management, she says if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
I think they're not reported, because I actually witnessed an accident.
Yeah.
Went right into the house.
Well, and I saw one of the sheriffs hit somebody going up that road one day. But, yeah, anyway.
Second.
Moved and seconded and no further comment, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. And just one other question, how are we coming on the underground utilities there?
They'll be part of this project.
Oh.
We, we found out that it would be cheaper to do it all as a project, not break it down.
So it's a major utility and finished surface project. It, it's all encompassing. You could really call it a complete street and complete underground project.
But you said that, but the utilities have to be placed first.
Yes.
Okay, okay.[1772.37]